Good morning and welcome to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee. And I can see that we have all councils in attendance except for councillor Madsen, who has asked for a leave of absence this morning. So I'd just like to move that a leave of absence be granted to councillor Jacob Madsen for today's committee and seconded by councillor Ireland. Thank you very much. We'll take that to the vote. All those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to the acknowledgement of country this morning, councillor Kunzaman.
Thank you Chair. Today this committee recognises the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. We support their right to democratic representation and social inclusion. Ipswich City Council acknowledges the ongoing challenges faced by Aboriginal, Torres Strait Islander people, excuse me, people, and this committee supports their inclusion and participation in community cultural arts and sports activities.
Thanks councillor. Does any member of committee have any declarations of interest in items on the agenda? We'll move on to item number one, which is the confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting. The recommendation here is that the minutes of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee held on the 13th of July be confirmed. I'm happy to move that. Do I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Kunzaman. Any discussion or amendments? No, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item number two this morning is the biennial customer service report card from January to June. Do any members of committee have any questions for the relevant council officer this morning? No. The recommendation here is that the biennial customer service report card be received and its contents noted. I'll open that up for discussion, mayor. Oh, sorry, you seconding, seconded by the mayor and open that up for discussion.
Um, it's a, thank you for the report. I found it a very interesting read. I note on page fifteen talking about the fact that Ipswich City Council has tested fourth out of fifty-one councils in local government contact centres with a higher than average sector benchmark, so ten percent higher than other areas. And I also note to some of the call centre volume, which is actually very handy to see the amount of calls that do come in to our organisation, especially, it's good to have that tracked when we're going to this snap, send, solve as well. So it'd be really to see how that goes in as well. I also note to Chair, the concierge and support overview, I'm guessing that's the concierge down in One Nicholas Street?
Correct.
Below there. So that's obviously a new service offering. So it was actually really good to see how that's being utilised as well. I'm not sure if that also covers off, like at the different libraries, we also have the council connect. I'm not sure if that includes that or not.
No, that, that data isn't included in that. So just strictly down here at One Nicholas.
Okay. I think it was a very, it's just interesting too, the topic. So, you know, nearly a quarter of the calls are about the rates.
Yeah.
Um, and then, then it's waste, roads, paths and plenty of, yeah, so it's really interesting. I would have thought there were. Yeah, it was very interesting.
Yeah, we, we do get that weekly report and they're always the, the top ones that, that come through to us. We'll begin to see some improvements, I guess, in maybe receiving less calls to the contact centre and certainly less intervention by the contact centre with the introduction of the snap, send, solve. There's been an internal push to promote that service and start its testing and at the weekly exchange for customer experience. I think there was a statistic thrown around to say that there had been nine hours worth of staff time already saved with the slow controlled rollout of the snap, send, solve already. So that in conjunction with, and we can see in this report here that those recommendations from the triple B advisory will be implemented over the course of the next few months as well. So I'll be keen to see those meaningful improvements made and also reported on. I think it's great that we're quantifying it in staff hours. I mean, that's a really good high level number for us to think about and all of the work that can be saved moving forward.
And not just for the contact centre, but the entire organisation as well. So when the contact centre does call other parts of the organisation to, to respond. And just to let residents know that if they call the contact centre, they're not happy with the response or anything like that, please contact their councillor or myself. That's, that's always been there and I think, so that's always available to people as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Through the chair.
Yes councillor Ireland.
Um, I just would like to know, how are the after-hours calls that come in? There's a lot of development in Division One about noise, dust, vibrations from developments or you know, the water trucks not being used. How does that work out on a, say a Saturday? What happens to those service requests? Do they just go into a queue until Monday morning or do we have a compliance officer that we contact to go out and have a look at? I'm, I'm just wondering the process.
We'll, we'll get a council officer to answer that question for us.
I've actually done this.
Thank you, Miss Chandler.
Good morning. Sam Chandler, manager of libraries and customer services. So the after-hours service, it depends on what the request is. So some of them will go in a queue to be triaged on the Monday, but if it's a high priority, then it'll be sent directly through to the right area. So it depends on what the, what the item is.
Um, so dust and vibrations from developments on a Saturday, how, how does, what do you do with those?
They would be recorded and sent through to be provided through to the correct area on the Monday. Snap, send, solve. If they go through a snap, send, solve process, that's different. So it depends if it's a call or if it's snap, send, solve.
Okay, but the residents aren't really happy with, you know, the dust is happening on the Saturday and we're not going to go and and make sure that they're using their water trucks until Monday. I've got residents that aren't really happy, you know, with that, that approach.
Okay, so it depends on where it sits in the priority. So can we work, we'll work through that separately. If, if that's okay, we'll have a, have a conversation and work through some of the actual examples. That would be helpful for us. Thank you.
As I say, if I may, Chair.
Of course.
Councillor, I've had situations whether it was with Midland and other times where I have rung the service centre by the after-hours and it's, I think there's a, there's an automated message that you have, it takes about twenty seconds and then I think you click a button, you go to another automated message. And then you could, that was my experience. And then you speak to someone and say, hey, this is what I'd like to have done and, and record it. But yeah, it's interesting to what, what happens from then on.
Sonia.
So happy to come back and provide further detail. We've got categorisations and so if it falls within the category of dangerous, which is priority one, then it goes obviously through an emergency contact and is dealt with immediately. So it would be depending on how we've, whether noise and vibrations is considered dangerous, I would suggest not if it's a nuisance, but happy to come back to the committee on that.
I think the one example I've got, the resident was quite concerned. His house was shaking. So for him, the vibration was very serious.
Yeah. Well, if that would be considered dangerous, if your house was shaking and you were afraid of collapse of the, the structure, then I would agree.
Okay. No further discussion and noting further advice to you councillor Ireland, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number three is the customer experience quarterly report for June two thousand and twenty-three. The recommendation here is that the June twenty-three quarterly report concerning the customer experience programme be received and its contents noted. I'm happy to move that. Do I have a seconda? Thanks councillor Doyle. We'll open that up for any, for, any questions of relevant council officers. We'll open that up for any discussion. Yeah, I'd just like to again thank the customer experience team for their focused efforts in progressing all of the action items here. And actually, we might get Samantha Chandler if she might be able to speak to some of the action items that might not appear on a future report and the consolidations that, that will be happening on those items. Yeah, thank you. So just for context to the committee, the IAP actions, there's a view to consolidate some of these actions. So the report that we see in front of, in front of us this month will be probably materially different come the next quarter. So I think it might be prudent of us to foreshadow that this morning.
Good morning. Sam Chandler, manager of libraries and customer services. So we've worked through a process of, with the immediate action plan, working through the items and either completing them. And so they're either at complete or awaiting closure or they've moved into the actual CX programme of work and then they prioritise through that process. So it's been a, an interesting process to go through, but it's been important because some of them require further discovery and further investigation before we work through exactly what the solution is that's required. So the, the, the next quarterly report that you'll see will have the closure of the immediate action plan and it'll move into just the CX programme of work.
Thank you, Miss Chandler.
May I, may I ask a question of Miss Chandler? Um, just with the snap, send, solve, when I've just launched about how things going and what, I guess this is your chance to tell residents about what the benefits of using it.
Yeah, it's, so we were averaging about a hundred a week coming through snap, send, solve prior to the change to the enterprise version. So in the first week, we've gone to a hundred and fifty, so that's great. So we were hoping for a gradual increase, not a boom. So we've, we've definitely achieved that. The benefit is that when a, when a resident actually puts something into snap, send, solve. So the previous process was if it was a Saturday and something went into snap, send, solve, it would sit in a queue until the staff came in on Monday and then it would be triaged. So depending on how many were there, it may have been triaged that day or it may have been the following day. So it creates a delay in the item actually being addressed. Whereas now in snap, send, solve because of the, they can actually choose what the item is and it goes directly to the correct area. So it will actually be where it needs to be right from the beginning, rather than waiting for that lag time for someone to actually triage it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the snap, send, solve is definitely something that has the potential to revolutionise the way our residents engage with council. I know councillor Doyle and I were playing on the Ipswich City Council landing page, the website and just navigating our way through the report and issue button and how that actually pushes you into the snap, send, solve. Councillor Doyle.
Yes, thank you Chair. I was, as you know, very keen to see what the user experience looked like and I'm pretty delighted so far with what the team has been able to achieve and, and look forward to more customer service, I guess, options being made available online to residents. Just want to take the opportunity to acknowledge your work Chair and working closely with the customer experience team. I know you've worked very closely with them, keeping the resident front and centre of everything we're doing. So thank you.
My pleasure. And, you know, for the benefit of committee, there was talk about the uptake of snap, send, solve as well and you know, we, we have to be realistic about our expectations in being able to service the community as well. And so as not to overwhelm the organisation, that's why the rollout has been a staged and considered approach rather than you know, us putting up billboards, letting our residents know that this is a new way of doing business. So we're really in that fact finding stage, those early stages right now. I was out and about in Goodna reporting some graffiti this week and, sorry, last week and the graffiti has now been removed and the snap, send, solve has sent me a closure for that. And it's, it's very, very easy to use, but I think one of my, one of the, one of my favourite sayings that came out of my hesitancy to promote this more broadly in the community, came the phrase, we could turn this into a Pokemon Go experience. And if you remember the revolution of two thousand and sixteen where people were wandering the streets and catching pocket monsters on their smartphones, I mean, it has the potential to have that sort of uptake.
Chair, I think every council is quaking in their boots as you, as you talk about that. I know you've mentioned it can be quite addictive. You get badges, is that correct?
That's correct. Snaps and solve does award you badges. So you, yeah.
Look at our CEO.
It, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a complete gamification, but it does like to give you that feedback and people, you know, and I guess snaps and solve have, you know, done a lot of, I guess, work in surveying their customers and understanding what works and what doesn't. And keeping it engaging is something that I think we can harness to be a real positive. Rather than, you know, becoming, you know, the, the own, the person who finds the most graffiti across the city and reports it through snaps and solve. But yeah, we, we look forward to seeing how that rolls through. As I said, the, the top line as of this week, after a week of being live, it was, it has saved nine hours worth of officers' time. So that's already a great little indication of the benefits that we'll see in the future. With that being said, we'll take the item to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Uh, the fourth item on today's agenda is the quarterly event sponsorship and ticket allocation report. This report is concerning the event sponsorship approved in the period from one April to thirty June as required under the event sponsorship policy. The recommendation here is in three parts. And that is and A, B and C all make mention to the different sponsorships that were allocated. So I'll move the recommendations in batch, A, B and C as red. Do we have a seconda for that? Thank you councillor Kunzaman. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? No, we'll open that up for any discussion that we might have. With no further discussion, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Our last item today, item number five, is the community funding and sponsorship allocation status report. April one to thirty June. The recommendation here is that, is for us to receive and note the report. I'll move. Thanks councillor Doyle for seconding. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant officer about community funding? Yep, mayor.
Yes, please. Chair, I'd like to just ask, it's something I raised at the civic and ceremonial events working group. Just in regards to when council does do grant funding, like the state and the federal governments, that council has acknowledged. And I was just asking, there was one event there that I'd asked a query about, the Ipswich Labour Day event, if that happened.
Thanks, Mr Poll. Yep.
Thank you Chair, Mayor. Ben Poll, General Manager, Community Cultural and Economic Development.
Thanks Mayor.
Through the chair, Mr Poll, just, I know I've raised this before and I think you're going to get back to me. The civic and ceremonial events funding, part of the grant process is that Ipswich City Council is acknowledged, just like the state. Uh, is acknowledged. Did that happen with the Ipswich Labour Day event?
Anecdotal feedback suggests no. I haven't been able to evidence that as yet, but I can report back, take it on notice and report back.
So would that be part of the acquittal's process, that they would have to provide evidence?
Exactly. Yes, part of the acquittal's process would normally be that they provide evidence of all of the requirements within the, the, the contract for funding.
Okay, thank you.
I'll open that up for any discussion. I mean, if you look at the head, oh councillor Ireland? No, if you look at the headline figures here, I mean, community events funding fifty thousand dollars. Community projects funding more than forty thousand dollars.
I think, I think Chair, if you've got an, an event or if you've got, you're a community group. I know councils running grant writing workshops and masterclasses, I can't remember the next one's on, I'm getting nods from there. I know council calls when you attend nearly all those masterclasses, but, but even if you want support in, in how to apply for state and federal grants, you know, our, you know, our team is always really happy to, you know, to help out our community groups, get the maximum benefit of the money that's there to help our community.
And I'm pleased to see that there was a bit of a rush at the end of the financial year on councillor discretionary funds being dispersed as well. So it's good to see those monies being delivered to important community groups. And yeah, as you said, Mayor, I mean, community funding, we never, ever, ever hear a bad word about, you know, our residents and our community groups dealing with community funding here because they always are so helpful. I mean, that, that, it's, it's been an open promise to us as elected representatives in the community for as long as I can remember that if you've got any questions or concerns, you can dial the number for community funding. You've always got a friendly voice on the end of the phone giving you really accurate advice, sometimes advising you to a grant that might potentially see your, your community group benefit with more cash. So it's a really great service that we run here and yeah.
And I wish every council did expend all their council discretionary fund. I know I do.
Uh, with no further discussion, we'll take that. Uh, with no further discussion, we'll take that to the close, to the vote, sorry, and all those in favour. And that's unanimous and carried. We have no notices of motion this morning and no matters arising. So we'll conclude the meeting. Oh, yeah, we'll conclude the meeting at twelve, quarter past twelve and we'll come back at one P M. Is everyone okay to come back at one P M for the next committee? Yep. Next committee at one P M. Thank you.